To call the meeting to order. The Planning Commission meeting of Monday, October 28th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Matt Snyder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you take the role, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Item number one on the agenda is approval of the last minutes meetings.
Thank you, I will move the...
Move the approval?
With approval.
Thank you.
Chair, second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commissioner's secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the agenda. So the consent calendar, we have none. And the public hearing. Public hearing on minor conditional use permit CUP 180021M to install a columbarium within the existing contemplation garden at the rear of the project site. A columbarium is a conditionally permitted use in the community facilities CF zoning district. The project site is the Gloria Day Church located at 33501 Stone Hill Drive. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening. That is a hot mic. Shawn Nicholas, Senior Planner. This is the minor conditional use permit associated with Gloria Day columbarium located at 33501 Stone Hill Drive. Just to orient everyone, the project site where the columbarium is proposed is located towards the rear of the site there in this back area. Located on top of an existing sitting bench and wall. It will be attached to that approximately 100 feet from the nearest residence. As noted, it is located within the community facility zoning district. Some history on the site. The approval of the Gloria Day Church occurred back in 1966 under the authority of the County of Orange. In 2014, the church came forward with a master plan. It did include new sanctuary site amenities such as the contemplation garden and the request for the columbarium at that time. During the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant, the church, requested that the columbarium be removed from their application stating that they would move forward with the columbarium as a separate application at a later time. This item before you is that separate application. There was a public hearing that did occur on July 3rd in which we staffed did solicit feedback from the public. Based on that feedback and public interest, it was determined that it should be heard by the entire Planning Commission and the project is considered an ancillary use to the primary function of a church at the site. Before you is, in the bottom corner, is again the bench area and the wall which the columbarium will be affixed to. It's about a four-foot tall prefabricated structure, so it has, based on the manufacturer specs, the attachment to that. Here is an image that was provided by the applicant of a similar type of prefabricated columbarium design. The proposal includes 222 niches which can potentially hold 444 urns, so two per niche. And then it's covered with a granite face and then room for two plaques to identify the interned. At the public meeting on July 3rd, there was primarily four topics that were discussed by members of the public. Whether or not the use is allowed, concerns about the church profiting from the use, impacts to the existing preschool, and then impacts to property values. And we're going to go through and just hit on each of those similarly to your staff report. So is this an allowed use? As we stated, the church was originally established in 1966 and when the city became incorporated, it became located in the CF zoning district in which cemetery is a conditionally allowed use. The columbarium is included in the definition of cemetery, so that's why it's a conditionally allowed use as well. The cemetery has been a conditionally permitted use since the original zoning ordinance adoption and there has been no amendments or modifications to that requirement since the original adoption. In terms of the church profiting, costs and profits are not standards by which the city evaluates projects. The community facilities zoning district intent and purpose does provide for a variety of public, quasi-public and private community facilities. And these are meant to serve residents, visitors, property owners, and employees or people that work here in the city. Does allow both public and private community uses such as hospitals, such as schools. And the community facilities district, if it was intended to have just nonprofit or institutional uses, it would clearly state and it does allow for a variety of non-public private type of uses. In terms of preschool impacts, the attendance at the preschool is completely voluntary. Staff did contact a similarly situated church use with columbarium and preschool in the city of San Clemente. They've indicated that they've had no impact or issues associated with the preschool within proximity to the columbarium. The applicant has noted that they have not had any concerns raised by the preschool families and additionally, they've indicated that they have not had a drop in people interested in attending the preschool on site. If we can get the clicker to work. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. So the last item is, has to do with property values. Again, to provide Planning Commission context, staff did do an online review and research what information was available. Staff determined that there was no scientific or peer-reviewed studies on the subject, nor was there any direct review regarding the effect of a columbarium use. But there were several articles associated with cemetery. And from that analysis, it was, the conclusions were varied. Redfin, as we noted, stated that while properties were longer on the market, they often saw 13% increase in property value. Realtor.com noted a 12% reduction. So depending on which source, the conclusions did vary. And another condition that was brought up, or another issue that was brought up at the public hearing had to do with notification or recognition of the site on map applications such as Google Maps or other types of facilities, mapping applications. As a condition of approval, the church will not be advertising on any of those types of applications. And if something does pop up, that they're going to work to try to remove that if necessary. So just to go over notification and over the history of how we've gotten here to the Planning Commission on July 3rd, as I stated, there was a staff conducted public hearing where we did receive feedback. On July 12th, it was determined that it would be appropriate for the full Planning Commission to review the item. The church did conduct two separate public outreach meetings at the site on both October 18th and October 20th. And then public notification was done by both email and standard postage 10 days prior to the hearing and also to requested interested parties. And the radius utilized for this project was 500 feet, which is greater than the 300 foot required by code. So in conclusion, it is termed by staff that the project is consistent with applicable Dana Point zoning code requirements. There's a variety of operational conditions of approval that have been provided and discussed in your staff report, including limits to internments and when they can occur, hours of visitation regarding the size of gatherings at internments, and as we already noted, no online identification on any kind of mapping application. Staff determined that it does meet all applicable findings, including consistency with the general plan and Dana Point zoning code. And with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution with the conditions of approval for the minor conditional use permit. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to address any of the Planning Commissioners' questions.
Start with Commissioner Nelson.
I'm going to hold off questions till after public testimony. Don't mind.
Mr. Murphy?
I'm not there right now.
Scott?
Shawn, I just want to confirm, the proposed columbarium kind of fits within that recess of the bench and the concrete wall, correct? It doesn't go above it, it doesn't, it's no taller?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Was there any conclusion at the outreach meetings or any compromise discussed?
In terms of the attendance of the outreach, that's something that the church representatives who conducted that can speak to, and I believe that their representatives are here and available as well.
Having no further comments from the Commissioners, then I will open the public hearing. And the speakers will name, will call the speakers' names. And then if you'll go to the podium, state your name and your city. And then we'll call a couple other names so we'll not have, we'll have a couple people waiting then, so we'll move this through. Thank you.
So I apologize upfront if I mispronounce any of these names, but the first speaker will be Parag Gondakar. And then after him will be Brian Bousman and then Lilia Smith.
Can I restate their name?
Okay, sound check, can you hear me? So I understand that I get three minutes to go through all this, so let me know when the time begins and I'll speak as fast as I can.
Would you state your name?
My name is Parag Gondakar. I live within 500 feet of this proposed development and I'm here to oppose it. And I'm going to read out to you my official response which indicates why this should be denied by the Planning Commission. Before I start, let me also remind everybody, I was here five years ago and it was very clearly protested by community that such development was not welcome right in the high density residential area. And we don't quite understand why this matter keeps coming up over and over again. Having said that, my opposition to this development is threefold. I'm going to list them in the order of importance. The very first one is on the religious ground. I practice religion which doesn't allow me to live anywhere close to where dead bodies in any shape or form are preserved. It is a serious violation of my religious freedom and constitution of this country gives me, allows me to practice my religious freedom the way I want it. It's not a choice I'm making to buy my house. When I bought this house eight years ago, we did our due diligence, there was not a cemetery anywhere close by us. Thus the reason we bought our house. Installing a cemetery, it is a cemetery whichever we want to call it, it's a wall of death, it's a cemetery. It's where dead people live right next to where we live is absolutely unacceptable. I'm not the only one in this. There are multiple people who are going to talk whose religious beliefs are going to be trampled on should you go ahead and accept this. That's point number one. Second point is the social stigma. It's commonly understood that cemetery development is not allowed within highly congested residential area. There is a precedent set within California, city of Danville circa 2012, where similar development was requested by Lutheran Church and it was rejected. All this documentation was provided to Planning Commission. I'm really disappointed to see that none of those summary items did make it here. It seemed like there seemed to be some selective amnesia about the thing that a city of Danapur wants to remember. And that needs to be fixed. Number three, we strongly feel that this development will negatively affect property values. There's no denying that buyer doesn't want to buy a house that is sitting right next to cemetery. You can twist numbers anywhere you want to twist number, but the fact remains that just the way I was in the market eight or nine years ago and making sure that there was no cemetery next to the house I wanted to buy, people are going to do that. And we cannot afford to lose value on our houses. So in closing, I would like to say that there are multiple reasons why this should be rejected. We don't see any single reason...
That's three minutes.
Any single reason why this should be approved. So I would urge and request Planning Commission to reject it outright and do the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker will be Brian Bousman followed by Lilia Smith and Dennis Fiz.
My name is Brian Bousman and I live right across the street from the church in Dana Point. So I'm opposed to this project also, again, on religious differences. We would not have moved next to this church if there had been a cemetery there at the time when we bought the house. We didn't mind there being a church there. In fact, it's a nice church. We do have some minor differences with it. But again, that is our main objection to it, is we do not want to live next to a cemetery, which it is, whether you call it a columbarium or a cemetery. And I feel I should just give the same speech I did five years ago and a couple of months ago at each of these other two meetings, but I think my points got across that I'm opposed to it for those reasons and Parag was much better speaker than I am at this. And again, keeping it off the internet, well, you know, good luck. I think we've all seen on how well you can keep things from being labeled on the internet regardless of how you do. Again, I'll just sum it up. I'm against this project. Please, we don't want a cemetery in our high-density neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Lilia Smith followed by Dennis Fiz and Hui Dang.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lilia Smith and I live across the street from this church. And I'm very much against this modification because I don't want to live next to cemetery. And yes, I know, it is not technically cemetery, but it's still dead people, even it's only the ashes. I moved into this house when the expectation that I would not have the cemetery next to me. My religion does not allow me to live next door to human remains. The place where dead people are buried is supposed to be separate from residential houses. I would not feel comfortable to have party in my backyard knowing the 500 dead people across the street. My kitchen window looks out of the church and it's like 200 only feet away from this columbarium. And I would probably be here funeral service while making breakfast. So I want to ask everybody, how do you feel after this and start your day? My daughter's bedroom window looks out of the church and she's nervous about living so close to hundreds of dead people. It is bad enough that we get bell tower and it's ringing every hour, every time here in my house. And I would not have bought this house had the memorial garden with ashes already been there. And I believe that allows this project will lower property value of my house and make it more difficult to sell, which I would have to go and sell because I can't stand this. And I'm also concerned about traffic after this modification. It was quite nice, now it's crazy. It's like 24-hour every day people going out from the church. And now it's going to be more and it's already busy place. So yesterday, they blocked my driveway. I couldn't even get out from the house because it was party or something, I don't know what's going on. And if a cemetery is going to be increased more traffic because people come to visit more. And also, I worry about homeless already having a park and now it's going to be criminals and homeless population in my neighborhood and it's going to be crazy. I'm sorry, I'm very against this project. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Dennis Fiz followed by Hui Dang and Christian Assise.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Pege and I'm a resident here at Dana Point. I'd like to address the issue of the definition of the columbarium. I know it falls under cemetery under definition, but everybody knows there's a big difference between a columbarium and a cemetery. And we're talking about ashes and not any human body parts. And I would believe that here in Dana Point, there are many people that have ashes in their home. You have neighbors right now that have the remains of their family members in their home. So if the commission decides that that's the point, that they do not want to have this columbarium because of ashes, not the body parts, then we need to pass a resolution and demand that all ashes be taken out of people's homes because it would offend people's religious beliefs and their neighbors may have their ashes in their house. Second thing, I've been in real estate for 43 years and there's no proof that I can see that will affect property values at all. The research you showed, nothing came up on columbariums. It was on cemeteries. It's a big difference. And where we live, property values have been increasing at a 5% rate ever since I lived here for 37 years. And there's no science or scientific evidence that a columbarium is going to change the property values. So I'm in favor of this. This is not only for our churches, for the community. And again, the biggest point is that we're talking about ashes. And kind of taking light, the most, probably the most expensive property that we have in our area is anything with ocean views and ocean fronts. I think we'd all agree with that. It's probably the biggest cemetery we have. There's dead body parts floating around and that all the time. So having a columbarium with ashes, I think, shouldn't be a problem. And I know it does bother some people, but the majority of the people here. And I just like to show hands, how many people here are in favor of a columbarium? Okay, just to give you a feeling of your audience.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, the next speech, sorry, next speaker is Hui Dang followed by Christian Assise and Bill Ramsey.
My name is Hui Dang. We came to Dana Point about 14 years ago. I don't have a religion problem with this proposal. Neither is any problem with property value. The only problem we have is that we live in the neighborhood. This is a public hearing. I don't know how many of your Planning Commission member and how many church member live in the neighborhood. That's all I'm saying. We live in the neighborhood. Every morning we come out to that street, we see the church. The thought that some human remain in the ashes there is very unsettling. So please take this into consideration. We are the people who live in the neighborhood and the church is part of our neighbor, so please deny this project. Thank you so much.
Okay, the next speaker is Christian Assise followed by Bill Ramsey and David Warnke. That was Christian.
Good evening. My name is Christian Assise. I have lived in Dana Point for almost 23 years, actually born and raised pretty much in Orange County, Cypress, before moving down here. I'm here to offer response in favor of the columbarium. The very definition of a church is community. I have nothing but respect for the folks who've come up here and had religious differences with this and have a problem with this. From my heart, I feel for them, but the reality is, as a community, we need to take into consideration everybody's will and everybody's desires. I personally have no interest in going into a columbarium or having my family go into a columbarium, but I respect the fact that the church is here to do that for the rest of the community. A church, again, is about community, whether it's supporting Al-Anon, Boy Scouts, trunk or treat, which was last night, which perhaps was the reason why this lady suffered some traffic. It's about the community and that's what this church does. This church is trying to do something for the community. I hope the community, the planners will take that into consideration, that this is not, this is not for profit. Somebody asked that question. A church by definition doesn't do that in the United States of America, but they're here to serve the needs of the community and I hope all of you guys will take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker is Bill Ramsey followed by David Warnke and Sam Purbaak.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Chair members of the Commission. My name, Bill Ramsey. I live in Lisoviejo, although I've not always lived there. My first home in California 30 years ago was in Dana Point. Very memorable experience. I'm here to put this in a little bit of a historical perspective. I was raised in Pennsylvania, my wife in Virginia. My grandparents are buried at Gulf Mills Cemetery along Gulf Mills Road in West Conshohocken, Pennsylvania. If you look at that, if you go on Google Earth and you look at that real closely, you'll see a church, you'll see a cemetery around that church, you'll see homes along Gulf Mills Road. It's very common, you see that all over the East Coast and the Midwest. Likewise, my wife, her grandparents are buried in Edgewood Cemetery, right outside of Shepherdstown, West Virginia. Same thing, you have across the road, a middle school. You have homes around that middle school, you have homes adjoining the church and the cemetery. Not uncommon. So what's happened over the years is that there's been this allocation of land use. We've really kind of over-regulated land use to a large extent and there's been a separation of that community-based worshiping, bringing children to church, christening them at the beginning of their life, having their memorial services, burying them at the end of their life. And here in California, we don't have that same, we don't have that same, you know, legacy or value that once existed. I think part of that is by virtue of the fact that people by and large have become increasingly uncomfortable with the sense of their own mortality. But the fact of the matter is, none of us, none of us are getting out of this alive. You know, mortality is a, it's a reality and many of us are not required to confront it until we lose a family member and we have to deal with that harsh reality. Other issue that I'd like to mention is just the issue of land use, land availability. Columbarium, the beauty of a columbarium is that it has, it's very compact. It occupies an area, a grodo, that's very private. It's virtually, it can't be seen from any property except I think if two residences above it, those residents walk out to the back of their yards and look down in that grodo, then they can see it. So I think the issue for many folks is the issue of that, what they picture in their mind, it's the thought. It's the thought of the fact that there are cremains there that is unsettling. But I think that, I think we can say with confidence that once it would be developed and those cremains would be there, it would virtually, virtually be out of sight, out of mind. It's not going to have an impact on neighbors. Here in South County, there are no, there are no cemeteries. Nothing new, nothing has been built in the past 30 years plus. There was a proposal at one point in time for Rancho Capistrano...
That's three minutes.
Okay, let me wrap up. Rancho Capistrano to develop a cemetery, that didn't happen. Beauty of the columbarium is that it provides a very compact, environmentally sensitive way to accommodate the remains of folks here in South County and those who are members of the church. So I think that staff has gotten it totally right. We fully support the staff's recommendation and we hope that the Commission grants conditional approval this evening. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, David Warnke followed by Sam Purbaak with the final with David Mattson. Mattson.
Good evening. My name is David Warnke. I've been a resident, a homeowner, and a taxpayer in Dana Point, in the neighborhood, for more than 35 years. I want to make it perfectly clear that I support this project. I think it's a fabulous idea. It's something that our community needs. As some of the prior speakers have spoken, there are not a lot of alternatives. End-of-life decisions are something we all have to deal with sooner or later, whether it's for ourselves or our loved ones. A columbarium is far more environmentally sensitive than large tracts of land with traditional graveyards. And certainly, it's a much better alternative than dumping the remains of millions of people into our ocean. This is something the community wants. It's something that's sensitive. It's something that's tastefully planned, and it's something that the entire community, I think most of the community, would support. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Sam Purbabak, followed by David Mattson.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, the commission. My name is Sam Purbabak. I'm a physician. I work in all the hospitals in the vicinity, Mission Laguna, Saddleback, and Mission in Mission Viejo. Basically, I'm in the business of saving lives, just like the church is in the business of saving soul. But I didn't realize until now, and by the way, I live in the neighborhood, my house is right facing that columbarium or the graveyard. Even by definition of the city, columbarium is considered a graveyard. It's considered some sort of a graveyard. That's my house on the picture. It's my main kitchen window, as well as the living room, facing the bench and the future columbarium. And I have a two-years-old. And I don't know what I'm going to answer to him when he asks, Daddy, what is that block over there? And I should tell him that, okay, these are the remains of 444 people. And this is, it's wrong in so many levels that I can't believe even we're discussing it. Initially, I was here five years ago when the whole project was discussed and the church backed off for that project of columbarium. And now they are calling it a minor conditional use permit. This is really minor, even in the eyes of the planning commission, something that needs two public hearings about it is considered minor. That baffles me. And although it was said that there was no scientific study about the house and stuff, of course, when it comes to real estate, there is not that much a scientific study anyway. But I provided the commission with some study that was done empirically on the Realtor.com, but that at least 12% decrease in the home value, not just all that. I mean, I was thinking how to actually even form my talk, but it's wrong in so many levels. I mean, it's unbelievable that even we are discussing it. The city of Dana Point was famous for all these beautiful things that we have, and that's why I moved down here, for the resorts such as the San Regis and the Ritz Carlton, and the best place to do paddle boarding and going surfing. Now we're going to be famous. Oh, yeah, if you need a columbarium, or whatever, a graveyard for ashes, go to Dana Point. Gloria Day has 444 slots that is on sale. You can buy them. If any of the member of the church is in favor of that, they can have it in their own backyard. Why you don't offer to have the columbarium in your backyard and come with peace with your death? You know? Again, think the opposite. You are to the age that you are thinking about your life, your death.
That's three minutes.
I'm in the age that I'm thinking about all the kids and the life, okay? Not the death. And the concept of having 444 people, ashes in my backyard.
Sir, that was your three minutes.
I'm sorry?
That was three minutes.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Our final speaker is David Mattson.
David Mattson, pastor at Gloria Day and Dana Point resident. I'm just going to answer some questions that I've written down that may be here. Why is Gloria Day making this request? Because church members and residents have requested it. A columbarium is a place to hold the ashes of loved ones. The niches will be visible only to people standing in the memorial garden, which is a secluded place for prayer. What will the columbarium look like? The columbarium will be placed in the memorial garden at the very back of our property. The garden was landscaped several years ago, and the columbarium niches will be attached to the existing wall and contained in that area. In this area, only one or maybe two homes can actually see the niches. Two more homes can see the back of the existing wall. How long will it take to finish? About one week to secure the prefabricated granite niches onto the wall. Will the columbarium create more noise and activity? We don't believe so. The space will be used several times a year to place the ashes of a loved one into the niche, accompanied by prayers and scripture reading. Will local home values be impacted? Again, lots of discussion tonight. We don't believe there will be negative impact because there will be no signage or outside advertisement of the memorial garden. The best evidence for this is simply to look at how other properties have been impacted in surrounding communities, which have a church columbarium only. Our committee has looked at other columbariums in Orange County and around the country. While they are similar in some ways and different in others, we couldn't find a negative impact related to church columbariums and property value. Is this a moneymaker for the church? No. We have looked at the costs of many others, including public ones. The cost to people who choose to use this area will cover the structure and expense of upkeep. Does the church plan to enlarge the area? No. What about your schoolchildren? Won't they be negatively impacted? No, unless a particular parent wants to take their child there and, for some reasons, to speak to their child about end of life, this will have no impact. Again, the structure is already there, the garden, benches, and wall, and our preschool has never had a longer waiting list to get in. Even if it's not visible, what about people who just don't like the idea about death? Like all churches, Gloria Day deals with people in all walks of life. Many community groups, 12-step groups, support groups, mental health groups, associations, school groups, choirs, and others use our facility every day. We help people in every stage of life, from birth baptisms, confirmations, weddings, anniversary celebrations, and yes, funerals. People come to church for many reasons, to be inspired, encouraged, to give thanks, and yes, even to grieve. So we hope this will be a part of our overall ministry. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the open part of the public hearing. Now, the next session is, I will close the public hearing and open it for commissioner discussion. I'll start with the...
Sure, if I could, I have a couple, excuse me, I'm sorry, a couple of questions for staff. Mr. Nicholas, real quickly, can you help me understand why this is a minor use permit? It would be the first question. And would it change, or was it originally a minor use permit back five years ago?
So to your first question, it was considered a minor conditional use permit because it was seen as a minor addition to an existing approved conditional use permit, which is the 2014 conditional use permit you were referencing. No, in terms of 2014, it was just grouped with all the other components in terms of the master plan for the church. So it was just considered as part of the overall conditional use permit that covered many items for that project.
Okay. And then when I went through the minutes from that meeting, I recall reading a section, there was a discussion between the commission, looking for some information relative to this proposal back then. And if I read it correctly, and I guess I'm looking for confirmation, that it was withdrawn because there wasn't enough information, it was going to get continued, and they wanted to move forward with the project. Is that...
That's my understanding as well, sir.
Okay. And then going through our codes, we have three zoning districts that allow, for the sake of tonight, we'll call it a cemetery. It's the PF, the open space, and the rec. Is that, I mean, that would be the only other option here, would be to go to a park or to another site that's designated recreation? Put in columbarium or a cemetery?
Within the city of Dana Point, yes, sir.
Or another site with CF zoning?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Opal?
A couple of questions. Is there any regulatory agency that oversees cemeteries at all?
We have our requirements associated here locally with the conditional use permit or the minor conditional use permit in this particular case. In terms of, once they are established, I do not believe so. Our staff is not aware of any.
And then, have you looked at this with respect to any impacts to traffic? Do you think that this will add to the use and based on that intersection currently?
So we have looked at it in terms of traffic, actually back in 2014, as we indicated. This was, the columbarium was part of that consideration for the grander master plan, and there was a traffic analysis that was completed for that church expansion, which did include the columbarium use. And even with the columbarium use, with all the other components that have already been approved, the necessary improvements to traffic have been installed, so this would not create any additional traffic impacts, as well as we've added conditions of approval limiting to the number of people who can be involved with internment to hopefully, and also limitations to no internments during other types of events or services occurring on site. So staff does not foresee any additional traffic impacts as a result of the columbarium.
Thank you. And then my last question is, on your condition number 10 for advertising, what do you consider advertising?
So the concern was, that was brought up at the original public hearing on July 3rd, was that someone trying to purchase a home would go and look at Google Maps or other type of mapping app applications and see a highlight that there would be a columbarium located at this area. Staff looked at other columbariums within the surrounding communities and saw that several of the other churches that have columbariums didn't have callouts for those columbariums on there. So clearly, that it could be that these columbariums could exist without being noticed on these map programs. And so with that, that's where the history and background of that condition of approval being added, that they are not going to add that on themselves. I believe there's a process in which you can add things to those types of applications. And then if it were to be added by someone in the public, that they work to try to remove that, to not, as they said, put it out in the public or advertise it.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner McCann?
Excuse me. I understand that this is a very passionate issue. Probably, passion runs a lot deeper, as it typically does, for those against something. I just want to, excuse me, I want to take a moment to tell the audience what our purpose here is as planning commissioners. Our purpose is not to decide whether we like this or we don't like it. Our purpose is, and our task, is to decide, does this proposed use conform with the codes and laws in place as of right now in the city of Dana Point? And clearly, it does, in my opinion. There are multiple sides to every argument, and just because someone is against something, others are frequently for it, for varying reasons. But I, you know, I've studied this issue. I've been to the site. I've read supporting information. I've read the submitted letters and information for and against the proposed project. I'm in support of it. I find that it does conform with codes in place in Dana Point at this time. So I'll be supportive of the project.
I will echo my fellow commissioners' comment that this is an emotional issue. It's a very difficult issue. And when this was approved back in 2014, there was a section that said this contemplation garden would be open to the public for them to come in and partake of a serene setting. And it was approved under the condition of public art. In addition to the bells and the stained glass window, the contemplation garden was considered to be public art. So my concern is, if we approve a columbarium, is that going to enhance the contemplation garden for the public? Or is that only for the members of the church? So from that standpoint, I'm not in favor of the project. Is there any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and go. So I, you know, I was on the fence quite a bit on this, and I drive by this site every single day on the way to work. I visited the site multiple times. I drove up there, sat on the benches, looked around, listened to the community, listened to the noise, tried to put myself in the shoes of the people that live adjacent. And then I went and I visited columbarium in Laguna Beach, right off a park, I believe is, there's a Catholic church there and right adjacent to it. I think it's an Episcopal church. And I was surprised to find that the columbarium was located right on the property line. You could see it from both the street and from the alley, and it shared a property line with a church that doesn't even allow cremation. I then went and drove the entire community around Pacific View Mortuary, which is a much larger cemetery in Newport Beach. And one of the things that was interesting to me and that became very clear when I pulled up is that the entrance to this very large cemetery is the Harvard Day School, which is by far one of the highest rated, most expensive schools that I'm aware of for kids, a private elementary school. It didn't appear to have any concern with its location. You know, the property, property value discussion is an interesting one. You know, I'm a developer, I work for a developer, and we are building a project directly across the street from a cemetery. And in all of our research, in all of our market analysis, and all of our market experts, none of them thought that was an issue or something that should be used to determine value of the units, that it's a cultural issue only. There's actually no evidence that any property values have been damaged by these uses, which gave me some, it helped me, frankly. And then I read through all these letters. There was one letter that caught my eye, and that was a letter that talked about the project up in Danville, I think it was. But in doing some research, it doesn't appear that that project's ever gone forward, that it wasn't not denied, it just had a neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting that did not go well and a group of neighbors that didn't want it, fairly consistent with what we're hearing tonight. And it's an interesting issue. It's, you know, I have the remains of a family member in my house, and I visit other parts of my, or other members of my family in a cemetery in Lake Forest that's surrounded by residential uses. And so, you know, for those reasons, you know, I've spent probably more time on this than I've spent on other projects that were much more complicated, because this one's very personal for the people involved, the people that live near it, the people that want to enjoy it, and unfortunately for the people that may end up living in this wall. And I looked at our standards, and our standards are fairly straightforward. The first one is, is this going to jeopardize or adversely affect or constitute a menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare, or materially detrimental? And if you start breaking down those words, that's some pretty significant wording. Jeopardize is danger or peril. An adver-... Jeopardize is danger or peril, and adversely is a measurable amount of impact. Those are things that I think as a commission we have to look at. I don't want to discount chair donor's issue with the art. I have certainly a question of staff of how this would affect that, and I think it's something we should discuss. But on its face, setting that aside, I'm in support of this, and I've reached a conclusion that I would be okay with one of these next door to my house. And for that reason, I'm in support tonight.
Do we have any other comments? Mr. Murphy?
The more we hear from the residents and the more, we've all been up there probably for years and years and seen the school grow from a little tyke and being where it is today. And it's hard to try to ever think that that would be let go. It is of value to the community and of value to those around. However, all these other issues that have been talked about are not easy sometimes to coalesce with this other ideal. I like to beat something to death and try to figure out how to make it work, make it work. And this is tough. And I've been out there, I live very close by, I was out there today, twice. I've been out there, just as my colleagues have, day after day, trying to figure out how to make sense of this. We have certain things we have to follow, as has been described, from the county, from the city, and try to mulch all of this together in some way. It, I don't like to, it's hard to, and, excuse me for stuttering, but it's, everybody knows that neighborhoods are the fabric that keeps us together. And when you have good neighbors and people around you, that's who you go to, that's who you run across the street to, that's who you invite into your house. That's what makes life with your neighbors and family good. I have some insight in some of the property owners who have bought their homes decades ago and would not have foreseen this. And you can have great empathy for those who did not expect this. And having the church bring this issue to us, but I have to also look at Dana Point laws. And as was mentioned, everything is covered properly here. We have to follow the laws, and that's primary here, even though we've all got kind of, you know, this is hurtful in a way because it's not going to end up perfect for anybody in this room. So, that's all I have.
Any comments? I think under the section 9.65.040, the Dana Point zoning code stipulates a minimum of four findings. And I think this is where there's always room for interpretation. The use will not adversely affect or materially be detrimental to the property of other persons located in the vicinity or use. That's not quantifiable, that's an opinion, and it depends on which side of the fence you're on. So, in my view, it doesn't meet that specific criteria, although I can see an interpretation that would be different. But, so, with that said, if there's no other comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
Chair donor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the planning commission approve minor conditional use permit CUP 18-0021M to install a columbarium within the existing contemplation garden at the rear of the project site. A columbarium is a conditionally permitted use in the community facilities CF zoning district. The project site is the Gloria Day Church located 33501 Stone Hill Drive.
Have a second?
I'll second then.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two? You hit that, Madam Secretary? Okay, thank you.
For clarity, could we do a roll call for the record, please?
All right. Start with Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Chair donor, no. Commissioner Opal?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
So, we have the vote, we have completed, and so now I'll move on to old business. We have no old business, new business, we have no new business, and now staff reports.
The only item I have to report this evening, if you don't mind, I'll wait one moment for the rest. I took my wife up there. And, so it's okay, I'll go ahead with the staff report, which is short and sweet this evening. We did receive confirmation from all the commissioners that they will be available to attend the 11-18 meeting date, so we will be canceling the 11-11 date, which falls on Veterans Day holiday, in which the city is closed, rescheduling that for the 18th. And then we also will have a meeting the following week on the 25th, I believe. Stacy got confirmation?
Yes.
Yes. And based on the work we have in the pipeline, we will need to have those two meetings. Two last thoughts, I just want to thank the team for putting this meeting room together. It takes a big effort to do this every time we do it, and I appreciate all the effort in doing that. And finally, I just want to say, as this is my last meeting, I really appreciate working with the commission, staff, et cetera. I know these aren't easy decisions, and it's often a thankless job, it's an occupational hazard, and you guys do it remarkably well, and I appreciate your service. It's been great working with you. Thanks.
Now I'll call for commissioners' comments.
Well, you'll be missed. I remember when Ursula was leaving and you were coming on, or you were stepping up into her shoes, and that was, you know, a moment we started to get to know you a little bit better, and I've truly enjoyed the time I've had with you and getting to know you on a personal level, but more importantly, on a professional level, and the way you've done your job and the way you've led your team. And it's been a great experience, and I wish you the best of luck. I hope to cross paths once again, hopefully sooner than later, and maybe at the grocery store for all we know, right? But good luck, Matt. You've done the city really well, you've done us, you've left us in a better condition than we were when you got here, and so thank you for that. We need strong civic leaders like yourself, employees, and the rest of the staff. You guys actually are the ones that move the mountains. All we do is sit here and judge, but you have to deal with the phone calls and the emails and the upset, angry people, and the happy people too, of course. And it's not easy. And so, you're always a happy guy, I've never seen you with down spirits, and I don't know how you can actually do that, but that's for another day. So, thank you again for your time and for the opportunity to get to work with you.
Okay, thanks a lot. He took all the buzzwords that we could use. So, ditto, but in a personal note, it is true that you have always been there, and no question was too small, and there were times that I bugged you, and because I really needed somebody to start me, just get me started on a project, just figure out, you know, I would see these huge projects and wonder, how am I going to figure out where is the nexus to this project? And you were so kind and thoughtful to always just invite me in, and let's talk it through, let's draw some diagrams. So, and that, besides that, you're a really cool guy, so we are gonna miss you.
Mary?
I'm sorry. I just want to wish you the best luck in your new position.
Yeah, I mean, I wholeheartedly echo what the other commissioners have said. We're gonna miss you tremendously. I'm sure that the staff has, you know, really been able to lean on you and your expertise and your wisdom and your guidance, and you'll be sorely missed, but not forgotten. So, good luck.
Comments from my other commissioners, but also, Matt, I think the package you put together for the commissioners going forward, the orientation, the explanations, was extremely helpful, although I'd been on the commission for a while, I, you know, there's a lot of questions that you have when you come off the street, and this, you know, you see this stuff every day, your staff sees it. And one of the things I've learned when I talked to some other commissioners from other areas, we have just an outstanding staff, and it makes our job so much easier, and the leadership starts at the top. So, congratulations on your new assignment and best of luck in Indio. I will adjourn the meeting. Next meeting will be on the 18th, Monday, in our regular location.